Okay, the hour three o'clock having arrived. Thanks everybody for coming. Welcome everybody who's in the audience and online. All the media orders since we have every board here. Before we get into the meat of the meeting. I made a decision on my own that I don't want to start any meeting without thanking the board again for all the work this year. I don't think I can repeat that enough. We would not be as far along with everything we're doing if it wasn't for the help and the support of everybody that's here. So publicly, again, I want to say thank you. I hope everybody appreciates that who lives here in Stonebridge. The first item of business will be the Facilities Improvement Subcommittee Report, Gail Lee. Oh, before we get to the right end, you'll see an opportunity for those watching from home. You can sign in and send in a question or a comment to our committee. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Can you go to the next slide? Okay, as you know, we've had a lot of meetings this year. You can find the minutes, up-to-date minutes available on the website under the Facilities Improvement Plan. Recently, we've had some good news from the county. In 2018, I believe we got an approval from the county to bump out our bulkhead on hole number 18. And given that it's going to, it's a five-year approval and it would expire sometime in the 2023 timeline, we went ahead and applied to the county for an extension of that approval and they granted us that extension. So we're happy to know that we can bump out that bulkhead anytime that we would choose to between now and the end of the extension. We are finalizing the details of the interior space, the pool fence and outside seating. We're dropping some of the plans into the interior design plans, into the architectural plans, and making sure that it all looks right and it's the way we want it to be. And we're in the process, I think, this week of confirming the opinion of costs that we got earlier in June with a local general contractor. We are also hard at work on the vote brochure. We have circulated the initial draft to our committee. We're fine tuning it as we speak with any updated information and we've made a few changes to make sure we have it in the right page requirement for printing. We also last week saw some initial work in progress renderings and we think everybody will be really excited when they see these. They'll allow us to visualize when we have the town hall of what, how this, how we're going to look as we utilize the space and not have to imagine how we're going to look, but be able to actually visualize it. So we're in the process of, once we have those final renderings, to select which ones we're going to include in the vote brochure for people to have a look at. You all know this week we started back up bridging the future and so the communications that reflect Facility Club improvements, we will be drafting those communications. And I'm happy to report that we have not exceeded our approved budget by the board. And year-to-date spend through August is $101,000-plus thousand. It's been primarily in the past owner's rep and architectural expenses, but now we've brought an interior design firm on board and a couple of smaller payments to other consultants that have done parking lot, kitchen consultant, et cetera. So that's this. We're in the home stretch now, so we're going to finalize the design concepts. We're fine tuning the cost estimates. We're preparing for the town hall and the vote brochure. We continue to respond to any questions or concerns people have and we are monitoring the budget closely as we're getting near the end. So that's my report.
Yeah, could you elaborate a little bit more on the role of the members?
On the role of, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The member's representative, what his role is, how important he has been and will be. That's what you keep going.
Okay, the owner's representative is instrumental in the process because he is managing the overall process and he will be the one, when we get to the construction phase, to manage and optimize that process for us. So we're lucky, fortunate that our owner's rep, Jeff Nunner, is both a civil engineer and a licensed contractor. He has vast experience in dealing with permitting and he has worked as a civil engineer, so he knows many of the people in the permitting in Collier County. So I think as we saw that some of the challenges that we might have had in the last renovation, we hope not to have once, when we have an actual professional that's managing the whole process from start to finish.
Any questions for Gail?
Gail, I just wanted to say, to thank your committee, your member committee, they've done so much work, 36 meetings. And beyond those meetings, I know you've gone to other clubs and you've done so much work. I just want to thank them from the board for all the work they're doing.
I've been really lucky to have committed and engaged group that has supported the entire process throughout and it's done a lot of additional work. So I'm very grateful to have them, but thank you for the feedback.
Way beyond your 36 meetings, for sure. I know.
Yeah, that's for sure.
All right, the next report will be the Golf Course Renovation Subcommittee, Tom.
Okay, Ben, if you could just flip that aside, there you go. Our committee last met yesterday. As Gail said, we are in the final length here. The golf course renovation design is finalized. Hole-by-hole information is going to be put on the website and made available to the membership on October 5th. You'll see a very nice display of what each hole will look like, what it currently looks like, and the changes made both to sustainability and playability. So that will appear on October 5th. On the 7th, that week, we will be selling the live oak room with posters of the golf course and we will be inviting members to come in there to see those and talk about those and share their thoughts. We will have five, a once-a-week meeting in the live oak room for the membership to see. Based on their best timing, that room will also be open for people to go in when there are not representatives from the subcommittee, but there will be representatives from the subcommittee on October 7th and four other dates, which we will then interact with members and share our thoughts and their thoughts about the changes to the golf course. Making progress on the vote package, it has been circulated, as Gail said, to our committee also. Now, we've provided input and I think it's going to be a sharp-looking package for everybody to understand what all the changes are across the club. The Friday campaign work group is working to ensure that everyone understands what the changes are, et cetera. That group continues and we participate with that group and it made some very good decisions about how to best communicate this to the club. And then finally, videos have been done and are being done, both of the golf course architects. Member videos are being done that will be made available to the membership to describe changes and their thoughts about why these changes work for us. So that's about where we are. We will have one more meeting, or another meeting in October in preparation for the November 4th Town Hall. And I think we're ready to present all this to the membership.
Good. Thank you, Tom. Any questions from the board?
Tom, just one quick question. You said that the posters will be on display in the live oak room and on the course. What does that, what does that look like, Tom?
Well, the posters in the live oak room are 24 by 36 inch and they will show the current hole. They will show the new hole design and verbiage on the side that describes the changes, both for playability and sustainability. And there will be two sets of those made, one to the live oak room and another set that we plan to put out on the golf course so that our members can, you know, stand on the tee to the second hole or whatever and see what the new design will look like going forward. So I'm not sure exactly how often those are going to be out there, probably quite often, but it's just another opportunity for the member to see what the proposal looks like while they're actually playing the hole.
I think that's a great idea. Thanks.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. It's great.
Any other questions, comments? All right, the next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee Reports and Recommendation. David?
Thanks, Jim. The Finance Committee, there's been a subgroup that has been spending probably the majority of their, not probably, they've spent a lot of their time, more so than the full Finance Committee, but they've reviewed in depth a lot of the detail on this project and have come up with recommendations and that those were submitted to the full Finance Committee last Friday and the full Finance Committee has supported those recommendations. So if you could go to the next slide, Jim? The recommendations are that we maintain what we have been talking about for quite some time, the $124 per member per month. We are recommending a $13 million total project and a 12-year loan term. Are, in addition to what you see on the slide there, our follow-on to the recommendation is that we include these as not to exceed. So 13 million not to exceed and 124 not to exceed, as well as a 12-year loan. We don't believe it's wise to go beyond a 12-year period. And again, this is all predicated on the fact that the existing loan would be paid off before any new loan would be taken on and that would be, the new loan would be due and fully paid on or before February 1st of '23. So those are the base committee recommendations. Any questions?
David, do you want to, I guess we can do a motion here to approve that? And all it needs is a motion and second, and then a conversation?
I'm so moved.
Second.
All right, board first, if anybody wants to comment on this recommendation.
So Dave, I think it's very important that you added that little "not to exceed" so that our members can feel certain. This is it. This is the total. It will exceed it. There's a possibility that it could be less, depending upon the interest rate that we get when it comes time to take out the loan, but for the members to know that this is the max, I think is very important.
That's right. And the committee, that was the sentiment of the committee as well.
Sandy, any comments?
Yeah. David, I guess I'd just say that, you know, this is, as you prefaced your comments, this is where we were at the very beginning. And, you know, to have been able to get to where we are with, I think, what these projects, this project appears, what it can do for Stonebridge to be able to keep it at 124, 13, and 12, I think that's a success on its own and I agree that we need to commit to that and that those would be the maxes. And if we can do better than that and it's less than that, that would be even more of a win.
And David, for clarification, the loan application would be made in the second or third quarter of '22? Is that right?
It'd be in the fourth quarter of '22. It'd be in the fall, in the fall of 2020, 2022.
Any other comments from the board? Ben, anything online?
I just have a question. Tom, you had done your report. I know that Gail said that financially she was on track with her projections. Is that the same for the golf renovation?
Yes, and we will, as I think, you know, we will not bid this project out until the fall of 2022. So, you know, a lot of things can happen through a very moving economy right now.
Right, right, exactly.
Hey, nothing on my else, okay. Anyone in the audience, since this is a motion, please come on up to the table so that the microphone can pick you up. Mr. Gail Jeremy?
All right, a question for Dave Harper. If we were to do this today at $124, $13 million, rather, over 12 years, what would the total cost be at current interest rates or ballpark?
Well, if, I mean, we've had some discussions with banks preliminarily and they're not willing to commit any rates, but they're looking in the ballpark of 3.75% to 4% if we did it today. But the expectation from their perspective and even what we hear from the feds is that they're probably in mid-'22, they're going to start pushing the rate up and likely it's not going to be increased at, with big chunks, but a quarter percent here, a half a percent there and it could creep to something that would be, and again, in our budget, we have a 4.5% increase or 4.5% interest rate. I hope we cannot and do not reach that interest rate, but it's, it is certainly not out of the realm of possibility, but we don't know what the feds are going to do and they don't even know what they're going to do because they cannot agree on what they're going to do. So we're kind of at the mercy of what the feds are planning and what the, what the impact of those rates from inflation is going to be.
Yeah, there's, as always, there's uncertainty, so we don't know which rate, which way rates are going to go. But my, the nature of my question is, current rates, just to get a ballpark figure, that $13 million, what would the actual payback cost be with interest over a 12-year period? Do you have any sense of that, what the actual out-of-pocket cost will be?
Well, yeah, it's the $124 per member per month over 12 years. That's the, that's the debt service. That's the principal and interest.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Mr.? Dave?
Jim, this is Max. Can you hear me? I've been having some audio issues.
Can you hear me?
A little bit muffled. Okay, all right. We may be, I can see everybody and I can hear everybody. I'm actually talking on my phone, but looking at the screen, so.
Okay. Jim, could you have members identify themselves when they speak so that we could know who they are? We can't, I can't see who it is.
Too close, too far, right? You're perfect. Just, Ben, you can take the screen down so they can see. Can everybody see John now? Did you say John? There he is.
There you are.
He appeared. All right, John, all yous.
Thank you. Dave, from a practical aspect, for clarification on my part, because I have a tendency to look at it as an ex-banker, the $13 million that we're talking about, that's not the loan amount. That's the total project cost anticipated.
That's correct.
We're actually looking at $11 million potentially because we have $2 million in reserves.
We're looking at an $11 million loan with $2 million of reserves to equal the $13 million.
I just wanted to clarify that that was it, that suddenly, suddenly, plus two suddenly appeared. So it's, it's not 15, so.
No.
So not to exceed, loan amount will be somewhere in the neighborhood of the $11 million.
Yes. It's the 100, yes, $124, which includes interest. That's the principal and interest that all members would pay over a 12-year period of time on a monthly basis.
Dividing it by 799, you get some figure. But the other question relative to that is, what happens if? We suddenly, because originally this started out with a fewer-year payback, let's say. And now we're up to 12 years as a minimum. What happens again if, if the Fed finally makes a move and does all these things and we're suddenly faced with 5%? How are we going to eat that difference compared to what are we paying now per member? Are we paying the 124 or are we paying 77 or what do we pay?
You're paying, for the 12, for the 10-year loan that you're paying back, you've been paying $76 per month.
Okay, so we're now looking at the difference between 124 and 76.
That's $48.
$48?
Yes.
Per month?
Per month. $12 per week.
How many per day? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Jim.
Karen Dillis?
I can ask you, because maybe you could do it. When anybody is up here with their back to the audience, it's impossible to hear what they're saying. So if, on the other side, the people who are going to answer the question for the main part, if they could repeat the question or formulate their answer so that we know what the question is.
All right, anyone else? Questions or comments on the board? Yes, Rob Ford, ladies and gentlemen.
Rob Ford, I asked a question last time. If you did not have hard numbers, delay the vote. I'm not hearing hard numbers. I'm hearing Gail saying, the opinion are that the numbers look good. And I'm hearing Tom saying, we'll get hard numbers in fall 2022. Okay? That is what it is. Understand the big old thing. I'll table that question. The next question is, if it starts mushrooming, who starts making the cuts? If we start overspending on the facilities, who's going to, are we going to be taking it out of the golf course and vice versa? Let's say we overspend on the golf course. Are we suddenly then not going to have a lap pool or something like that? Are we going to keep these two, whilst we've got this jumbo number, are we going to keep the projects separate and manage to whatever the number comes in at when there's a? Did you all hear that?
Yes.
Dave, you want to take a first shot at that answer?
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure who that was addressed at, but Rob, I'll take a, I'll take a first whack at it. There's really two options. If, if this thing gets out of, out of control in terms of what we're saying is, is a reasonable budget to stay within, 13 million. And again, Rob, you've sat on the Finance Committee and you've gotten some of these discussions, but the, the, there's two options. One is that we have to cut back the scope to keep within the $13 million. Or the other option is if this is to a point where scope is not an option and we're over the cost estimates, then that has to cause a revisit. Now, whether it comes out of the golf course or whether it comes out of facilities, we could play what-ifs until the cows come home and it, we're, I'm not sure it does us any good because right now we've got professionals telling us how much this should cost in 2023 and we need to go with it and we need to hold them accountable. And until we get to a point where it gets blown out of the water, we go with what we got and that's kind of where we're at.
I think that's why it's important, Dave, that you underlined again not to exceed. If the members vote on this project with these parameters, not to exceed, down the line, we get an interest rate that's not very nice or whatever, then it's back to the drawing board.
My question was related to, would we skinny down one at the expense of the other?
I don't think we can answer that.
Then, then that's an answer to my question. Yeah, I understand. I appreciate all the, you know, I'm a finance guy. I appreciate that. I'm just wondering, who gets a haircut when the going gets tough, if it gets?
Yeah. Excuse me, Rob, this is Tom Pinkerton. You know, I think at that point, our, the Subcommittee on the Golf Course would be involved, Gail's Subcommittee would be involved and most certainly the board would be involved to see what made the most sense, where we could take the haircut, as you say, that would impact us the least from a product point of view, but also impact us the most from a financial point of view. And as David said, that's hard to figure out what that would be at this point.
Any others? Questions, please? Yes, Sally?
Not a question, but just a comment. Rob, I think your question is very valid, but I also don't see the problem with looking ahead a little bit with this in mind and anticipating before it happens, if it does, if there is a possibility that financially we are overbooked. Let's look now at the different ones. So you have some more hard costs on different pieces of the project. What would be the most logical point to trim? What would be the easiest? What would be the least impactful? Rather than all of a sudden having to deal with it if it happens. There's no, I should not think that it would be a problem to look ahead and just be prepared in case we encounter that situation.
Can I, can I, can I answer or attempt to answer that? We are looking ahead and this isn't cast in stone. Every, as we progress through this, we're going to continually review where we are and what the costs are and how our contingencies and our cushions and whatever else we've built into this to keep us in line with a $13 million project. We're going to continue to look at this on a regular basis. If not monthly, we'll be looking at it weekly as well management. So this is not cast in stone and it will be evaluated on a regular basis going forward. So making a decision now about what could happen in the future is an exercise that I'm not sure is going to help us. So the continued review So the continued review is what's going to help us and that's what's going to keep us in line.
Anyone else? Kevin?
I have one comment and one question. My comment would be, as I've listened to this and I've attended the other town hall meetings, it appears what, well, to go back a step, we, this will be our third golf course renovation and our second clubhouse renovation. And it appears unlike in the past, what we're doing now is we're being asked to vote on a total amount of money that we think we can get the work done for. We have no hard numbers. So it's really, we're voting to spend, we think, 13 million. And if it's more than that, or it starts to exceed that, we'll have to do some kind of value engineering to reduce the project. My question is really to Tom Pinkerton. If I saw your chart correctly, Tom, you have the full design of the golf course, your committee has reviewed it. Today is the 23rd of September and you said you're not putting it online to October 5th. Is there a reason for the delay?
You know, there's no particular reason, it's just the timing. We're putting together a nice looking display that the members will be able to work through. That's less than two weeks away. But that was just the date that we chose to try to roll out the final product to the membership government.
Your, your bullet before that said you had the finalized design.
That's correct, we do, of the golf course.
Can that be posted before October 5th or is?
Yeah, we would prefer not to, would prefer to roll it out, you know, two days before the live oak presentation is available to give, yeah, just to give us time to get it done and the way that we want it to look. And, but there's no, nothing magic about October 5th.
It just didn't seem to me, if the, if it is finalized and your committee's seen it, the board has seen it, I would think it would be available to members.
We have not seen it. We have not seen it.
Why we're waiting 13 or 14 days?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Got a question online. This is from Bruce Hudson. He said, when we get approval from the members to move forward with the loan, would be possible to get the loan this fall and lock in a rate?
The answer is no, because we, the first recommendation from the membership was that no new loan until the old loan is paid off.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reality is, if we could lock in a rate, we may not have to actually pull draw, pull down or draw down the funds until the old loan is paid off. So locking in the rate is different from pulling down the funds and actually taking on the new loan. So the answer is yes, we could possibly lock in rates in the fall of '22. And that would hopefully get ahead of what the feds decide to do in 2023. And that would be our goal is to beat the market before it, it hits.
Anything else, Ben?
Nope, that's all.
Karen?
I don't have a stand so that they can hear me.
We'll repeat it. We'll repeat it.
Okay. What I would like to know, I guess the first question is, maybe it's to you, Dave, I'm not sure. But it is my understanding that for our experience here in southwest Florida, that a core, a golf course that takes the amount of rounds that we have played here and played all year, needs to have a replenishment, a maintenance, whatever label you want to put on what needs to be done for the golf course so that it is in 100% the best condition that we can make it. And I think what has been our experience is that it's a 10-year window. So I don't understand, so that we make the right choice golf course, it is one thing to take the amounts and spread them over 12 years, spread them over 14 years, whatever. Of course, you make the payments. Membership were more appealing because I went back and I went through the survey from 2020 carefully, line by line. We paid for that survey because we wanted an outside firm to come in and tell us what do the members want. The members clearly stated, the majority of members, there's always people on both extremes of a bell curve, but the majority of members asked to pay either lower than $100 or $100 monthly. And I think we ought to stick with that. If the members tell you, in the major portion of the members, there were people that would pay 125, there were people that would only pay 25, but the majority of members voted clearly to pay 100. So my first part of the question, I guess, is, I think we ought to stick with that number because that's what they told us. If we bother to have a survey, then we ought to stick with the results of the survey. So that's number one. And number two, since we know from experience that the maintenance of the golf course, due to the circumstances of where the golf course is placed and the amount of rounds, really needs to be rejuvenated, become maintenance free, so it's got an acceptable level of play in 10 years. I'd like to hear, before we get further ahead, that everything has to be $124 a month and that we're going to do this for 12 years because I think we're going out behind the bush trying to do this when we've already exceeded what the members and what our own experience here has been.
Good. Everybody hear that on the board? All right, Tom Pinkerton, you want to talk about the sustainability part of the golf proposal, please?
Yeah, I can respond a little bit to that. Sustainability of the, of the new golf course is, is a big part of our effort. And you are right, our golf course has been renovated. This time it's 13 years since the last time, I think before that it was around 10. One of the reasons why we, we are confident that we need to do it now and that we need to do it right is that this time, every fairway will be removed. Every fairway will be dug down from six to 10 inches and all that material will be removed and replaced. 13 years ago, when the golf course was redone, they did not remove the material. They killed the grass, they scraped it, they put in new grass, but the material was not removed. So that material that really drives the sustainability, particularly of the fairways, which is where we all drive 42,000 times a year on our carts, those fairways have not been re-renovated since the course was built, really. So this is our opportunity to take out those six to 10 inches, dispose of that material, bring in new material, which will provide a larger surface, more sustainability. And, you know, we are certain, we are confident that the 15 to 20-year timeline for the next renovation is very reasonable. Think back, this is 13 years since we did what we did last. And we didn't do it as completely maybe as we might have. This time we're going to do a very complete job. And hopefully that will allow us, or certainly that will allow us to go well beyond the 13 years that we've done this time.
Dave Harper, just to clarify again, in relation to Karen's question, would you clarify the life expectancy, if you want to call it that, and why you would need to match up the term with the life expectancy of the assets that you're putting on the books?
Oh, well, the, the, you keep hearing the term sustainability and that's real. It's a, a real benefit that this project provides because it, it affects a lot of things like the, I mean, particularly the golf course, the sustainability, sustainability of the golf course extends the life. Sustainability means extending the useful life. That's just another way of saying it. And where we used to be looking at a 10 to 12-year or 10 to 13-year renovation, now we're talking 15 to 20 years. If we do this right and do it the way it's planned. So taking the loan out 12 years is well below the, the expected sustainability or useful life of the new golf course and the new facility. So that's one issue. The other issue is the question about $100. Well, I did the survey myself. I filled out what I thought I would want to pay, as, as everybody did, but I had no idea what I was asking to pay for. And I certainly had no idea that what I was checking the box on was going to result in a plan that looks like what we're looking at today. So if I knew that, I probably would have checked a box higher than the number I checked. So everybody who filled out that survey had no idea what they were actually expecting or could expect for the money that they thought they were going to pay for. So I think that's a, a key, a key part of, of the discussion.
Can, can I say something about the, the, the survey and the amount members were willing to pay? While it's true that 68% said $100 or less, if you want to know what the majority of, of members said, you would have to look at the people who paid 100, said $100 or more, because that was 73% of the members said $100 or more. That's why we like to use the average of, which was 110. Now, in that, in the members who responded, 3% didn't give a number, but they were calculated into the average of $110 and 18 cents a month. So if we took them out, which the consultant, you know, we didn't ask him to, but they're included for completeness, that average would have slightly higher than $110 a month. So I, for, to, to say that the majority of members said $100 or less is actually not correct. And I just, I just want us to, to understand that when our consultant said that many times if you bring a plan that captivates people and delivers more than they expect, they are willing to pay somewhat more. And if you're, if you're objecting to the difference between 110 and $124 a month, you're, you're talking about, you object to $14 a month. And if you multiply that times a year, that's not a significant amount of money for to get two plans that deliver and meet the needs and wants of what people told us in the survey.
One other thing that I would add to this, and I said this at the town hall meeting last, is that if you take the current dollars that we're spending, which is $76, and you time value adjust that forward because that was a number that everybody felt comfortable that they wanted to pay for the, the new clubhouse back 10, almost 10 years ago, that $76 today would be over $124, at four and a half percent of being new construction costs. So it's, it's just another way that we need to kind of keep this in perspective.
And then, yes, John?
I wasn't going to bring up John Burnham again. I wasn't going to bring up the survey because I had correspondence for quite a few months with one or more members of the committee. It, it kind of irritated me when I'm told over and over again, the majority, and the majority of this and the majority of that. The exercise facility, as an example, you, you recited 64% response on different areas. The exercise facility had 27% of improvements, if I remember correctly. So here we are now, to spend quite a bit of time tearing down an older facility for 27% of the votes that were taken at, at that time. Again, I agree with Dave that when I took that survey, I had no idea what was being planned. My reaction was I was not particularly one in favor of expanding and doing a new swimming pool, lap pools. The swimming pool that we have, we, we refer to as the grandfather grandmother pool. That's for when the kids visit. And if you don't have a pool, it's a place you take them and they have a great time. So now we're converting it over to a lap pool. And I have seen in my community up north, the lap pools get into a lot of disagreements with regard to time and everything else. But anyway, the bottom line is that we're going to be spending a lot of money on a roughly 27% request or approval as versus the 64% for the bistro and/or the golf course. And I can appreciate the major numbers, but to spend that much money that we're going to, which is unknown right now for that phase of it, because we're being told, well, we can't really tell you what the. We do know though, it's going to have 24-person mahjong tables, so we can have tourneys. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Yeah, Kevin?
David, I wanted to address your comment about the $76 a month. For those of us who were here, prior to 2012, this club had zero debt. And when the clubhouse question came up for renovation, and it was approved to spend 6.4 million, some of the members, and some are sitting here in the audience, did not want to go into debt. And we approached the board, we each wanted to pay our share of the 6 million ahead of time, which I believe was about $7,000. And our law firm told us that we couldn't do that. And my point is, you seem to refer as this $76 as a fee we've always paid or we continue to pay. It was clear to the members when we voted in 2012 that it was going to sunset in 2022, that it was a 10-year loan. So really what we're voting on, if we vote yes, we'll pay 124 a month. If we vote, we'll pay zero because the $76 goes away. Thank you.
Sorry, I got here late, so I don't exactly know what's going on. I, I have a question though, actually I have two, so I don't know whether one's been addressed. One was, as you know, from the first time I spoke, we had, it was, when the redesign was presented to us, we said, well, we want to vote on a redesign or a renovation. That was the whole issue right there. We wanted to vote on that. And people knowing that a renovation and a redesign are different. So now I've noticed that in all the information coming out, the word redesign has been dropped and now it's renovation. So I feel that that's a very confusing thing to present to the members or the naysayers, as we're called, because some of the people that were on our list, well, all of the people that were on our list of over 200 people, did say they were for a renovation, but they weren't for a redesign. of over 200 people, did say they were for a renovation, but they weren't for a redesign. Now you're going to call it a renovation, which to me is very confusing all the way around to those people. The second thing is, and maybe it's been spoken to, I don't know. I was always under the impression that a committee or a focus group comes together and they present an idea on what they think the club should have, what, what new things we should have. They present it to the board, and then the board makes the determination of whether they approve of that or not. If they do approve of it, they present it to the membership. And then the membership, they leave it up to the membership to then make the decision whether they want it or they don't want it. But this time, we're like, this is your agenda, and it's going to be your agenda, and you're going to push it. And because you're getting a little pushback from some of the members, uh, we're, we're being divisive. And I certainly don't want to be divisive. I don't want to have the club split apart. But I do question back that an awful lot of money, my money, owner's money, is being spent on pushing your agenda. New poster boards, and they were beautiful, I can't argue that, but new poster boards. And now we're going to have a video of the golf course. And now we're going to have, um, let's see, pamphlets, covered pamphlets that are going to go out to everybody. That's our money you're spending. I'm assuming, I don't know where else you're getting the money to do all of this. And yet, the people who are opposed cannot use that money to do the same thing. And I object to that. I simply object that you are using owners' monies, who are not for all of this, to push your agenda. And I don't think the board should be doing that. Thank you.
Yes. Gail Howie?
I was here, Gail Howie, I was here in the beginning when we had our new addition, how many years ago it was, and how great it was. And we had a lot of pushback then, and now we're getting the same kind of pushback. But I think if you, as I understand it, we've had about 75 new homes that have changed hands this year. And those, and that's only up until right now. So if you think about the 75 new owners that are coming in, and they're paying the amount that they, we are all paying, then ask them to pay $48 a month more for all of what you're going to get, then I, they probably think they're getting the best deal around for their extra $48 a month. And I think we have to look forward, and we can't look backwards, because if you, if you do nothing, you are going backwards. If you are thinking more straightforward as this board and as all the other boards have. I mean, they are all very physically responsible. I was on it for three years. I know how hard they work to try and keep the club competitive and up to date. That's all I can say.
Say something to Andy's comment, did Andy leave? When you say that it's a board agenda, and we're pushing a board agenda, what is any different from what we voted on 10 years ago than now? It was a plan that was coordinated through member input, through committees, with an architect that was given to the members, and you either said yes or no. That's exactly what we're doing right now. It's not the board agenda, Andy, it's not.
Hey, hey.
But Kathy, if you think back, the first time when you were on the board and Wansky and Mount, I think we're all on board, and you presented a clubhouse, and it was a take it or leave it clubhouse.
Absolutely.
And guess what? The people didn't want to take it or leave it.
Absolutely. And the second time, there were four options, Andy. But the members voted on which option early, early. But then when the vote came, when the vote came, you had one option. Here's what the members said. We went A, B, C, I believe it turned out to be A. The majority of the members said A. It was presented to the full membership, and it was accepted. Andy, this is not a group of nine people sitting around a table saying, let's see, what can we come up with now that they're really going to hate?
No, I, I never said that.
I know, but that's, that's a perception, Andy. It's not nine people. It's hundreds of members whose input we have taken into consideration and put forward a plan. That's what it is. We've taken it all into consideration. Somebody said to me not too long ago, if we didn't have foresight 10 years ago, 12 years ago, eight years ago, whenever the clubhouse renovation was, we'd still be standing at a bar where there six people could stand, and we'd be eating lunch in the butterfly garden. Foresight, we're looking ahead to what, in, in a community such as ours. And we're trying to get our membership to address the needs that we have going forward. And this is not a board-driven agenda, it's a member-driven agenda.
You gave a wish list. You put out a wish list. If you could have anything you wanted, what would you have?
Well, sure, people put out anything they wanted.
And then I said, I wanted a stay home, but I can't have one.
But then we said, what would you be willing to pay for?
And people voted, said less than 100, 100 or less.
68%, 73% said 100 or more.
I, I, Kathy, I don't.
Dale knows that, everybody.
It was 100. And how many said they wanted a, a pool taken out? They did not. I'm not saying we don't have to.
Andy, we've discussed that before. If you want a bigger bistro, that be, bigger bistro that will allow you to not have to come to dinner at 4 o'clock in the afternoon to get a table, takes up the space, because we have such a limited footprint, takes up the space where the, a pool is right now. And it's not a lap pool, John, there is a lap lane in it, but it takes up the space. So if you want a bigger bistro, which the majority of our members said, what do you want? We want a bigger bistro, the pool has to go. It's not being redesigned because people said we wanted a redesigned pool.
I give you that, honey. But I also don't believe that you're going to have 248 members that are going to come every Friday night. Well, I know the bistro has to be expanded, I am for that. I mean, I'm not against it. The whole thing was a separate golf course. I'm just saying, I also did not feel that that bistro had to be expanded to that amount where you're going to lose the feel of the bistro, because we're going to be all spread out. And half of the fun of the bistro is everybody being there. Yes, but 248 people, so we need to change X, Y, and Z? The same thing that we want.
Well, those things, we can debate that. I just want you to know, this is not a board agenda. This is not a board agenda.
If you had given us options, here, we could do these three. There's the community center and the redesign, here's innovation or the redesign, here's this. And then we vote on it. That's what people are simply saying.
And you were given an opportunity to, to, to voice your opinion on what you wanted?
It did, it did. I went to all the focus groups. Was I ever asked to sit on one committee for it? No.
Did you volunteer?
I, I told my name and was I ever asked? I'm at the, the fitness center all the time. Was I ever asked to sit on that committee? No. I mean, on the focus groups. Uh, I play golf, I play tennis. Was I ever asked to be on any of those? No, because the people, to me, my, and the people that were asked, they knew would go along with what the, the plan was.
That is not true. Well, that, Andy. When you're saying the board is pushing.
No. It's not true.
You're saying the board is pushing it.
I want to say that the people that came into the focus groups for the, when we did the member survey in 2020, those were randomly selected from lists that Tim gave to the consultant. We had zero input into who got chosen in for those, in for any of those six focus groups that went, Andy. We, we were not told until afterwards who was participating in those focus groups.
And there was also a cross-section of, of a lot of people throughout Stonebridge. So it's, it's, they represent every neighborhood, and they didn't go into it in favor of one thing or another. They just did their work.
Well, I just find it hard to believe that I could be part of, of so many activities that go on here in one focus group. I mean, I attended things that, that were presented, but I wasn't asked to be on any. But I find that a little difficult to believe. And neither were any of the friends that I know asked to be on it.
Okay, I was asked to be on a focus group. And they asked us, if you change this hole, my name is Gerald Baker, by the way. I've been here for 24 years. And I've seen changes we made in the past and so. Been pushed much more so by this board than we had the previous time. Which, it's just assumed that it's going to go through, but that's beside the point. I'm, the, the point I want to make here is, you talk about the focus group. Like, everybody in those focus groups favored doing all these changes. That is not true. I was in the focus group, okay? I did not favor all this. They asked us, on this hole, if you could change this hole, what would you change on this hole? So it was like, you know, eye in the sky, you know? I mean, let's just throw it out there, do whatever we want, and then that's what, that's what, that's what it was. And you shake your head no, but I was there.
Joe, we have to represent the majority.
I'm telling you, no, I was there. Everybody in the focus, that's not true. And not everybody on the board truly supports the changes that are being made. Now, they, they have to come together because you guys have collectively pushed everyone to, to step us in step and do this together. And I get that. But what you're not listening to is 200 employees sign a petition or a letter to ask for two separate votes. You ignore that.
No. It's on the agenda.
Okay, but, but you, but you have up until this point. Now, now, if we go forward and you, and you allow two separate votes, then I, I'm all in favor of, of looking and seeing what we can do. But one of the other things we talked about, the bistro, because the bistro is too, you know, it's not the right size, it's outside and so on, so we can't have, it's summer, we can't have it open. But when we had the halfway cafe, it was always open. It was even smaller, okay? People would come by, pick up their sandwiches, and go out there and eat outside. And we can't do it at the bistro. We can't go to there and order a restaurant. We've got to come up here. So now we're going to make it bigger, okay? And you're going to need more staff to cover it, and it's supposedly going to be open. So, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, we thought it was going to be open when, when we approved it the first time. Okay, but it's not. You know, the staffing changes and so on. You know, I, we're, we're just talking about things here that we really need to understand that all the members are not in favor.
We know that.
And, and we, and we need to, and we need to have a mandate. We can't have a 51% or 52% vote passing this, because we're going to have a problem. And it's just, it creates real angst amongst the members when, when you get so divided. And that's, and that's the problem. You know, I, I've gone through here, and, and what it does to my property is not, not good. It's not good for Sandy, what, what we're trying to propose for this golf course. Okay, and we've talked about that. Yet they made changes for all the other places around the golf course, but they didn't make those changes for our place. Okay, I proposed what we could do there to make this more agreeable to, to my neighborhood, too, to my section of, of the neighborhood. It's been ignored, okay? It's been totally ignored. There's plenty of places they can go, find other property to take, and to stand the lakes rather than driving around behind Sandy Fleming's house and behind my house, moving the tee box over and putting our house, homes in, in jeopardy from the tee box now. And I've talked about that, okay? But it's ignored, because they'll make changes for other people. None of the board people, other than Sandy, are affected negatively by the way this thing is set up. So, anyway.
I want to say something.
All right, Sandy, please.
There have been major components of this that I have not been in favor of. The situation that Gerald just talked about, I was ignored. And I have written multiple letters, and we were ignored. My husband is still against it and wants to vote negative. But because I'm on the board, I also think the cost is too high. But because I'm on the board, I'm going to support it, because not everyone is going to have the exact same opinion. And we're talking about the whole board pushing it. It's really been the committee, and the majority of these each committees are homeowners, not board members. In fact, we've been excluded to be part of these committees, because you can only have four people participate in it. So it's Jim Carroll, Dave Harper, and the two committee chairs. And so we have not been able to be a part of it. We've been seeing what's going on. But because of being, even though I have major concerns, and the board knows it, therefore I'm going to support it, I need to support it. So, and by the way, we have not seen the drawings. I don't know what the golf course, the final drawings look like, other than they haven't changed. Well, they changed it and won't change it back. And other neighborhoods, they are changing it back, exactly what Gerald has said. And I still don't have a good enough reason why they're not changing it, other than I'm being ignored, so. Your point about not being allowed two more people? To your point, Sandy, about not having two more board members, that went brought up. And the committee members, especially Gail, said, no, we don't need two more people. We don't need people overseeing what we're doing, which I think you did need.
That is not the truth, and you can stop right there.
What was that?
Not at all.
That is not the mission of the, of, that's not.
Was that brought up? Did they ask for two people?
Can I answer the question?
I'm not, not saying, not saying something that's not true, I'd like to know why.
Yes, you did. Well, let me tell you what is not true. When, when Larry trial was president, he limited the number of board members, because he wanted more input.
No, I'm not addressing that. At a meeting, somebody suggested, I think it was Dan, maybe, wouldn't it be healthy to have two more members on each, two more board members on each committee? It wasn't for that reason. The reason we added to is that Gail and Tom will be off the board come March, and this project is going to continue. So they took. Well, that pointed the button, I was just standing up for you. But I mean, each committee got a, a first-year board member so that the continuity would continue. Right. So therefore, that's four people. About representing our wishes. The last vote, you did do four things. The community came together, this, this is this, it was one vote. This time you didn't. Gail will back me up. Three members wanted a lap pool. Now we're getting a lap pool. You didn't listen to the members. You didn't listen to them. I'm, I'm, a lap lane. Yeah. A lap lane. So three members were in. 27% of the people said we don't have to redo the fitness center, it's being redone. So you're not listening to the members. I think what happened is these, these architects, whatever came in, blah, 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 how much would that cost? 13 billion, divide that by 799. You're not giving us what we want, and I don't represent it. You shouldn't represent that. You're saying you're giving what the community wants. Thank you.
Susan, you don't represent every single person in the community. Other people, they're, the people that exercise want a new, want expanded space in the fitness center. If you're not one of those people, then I, I think you need to look at it like, we're trying to meet the needs of just not some members, but the majority, if not all of members. And so I, I wish people would take a look at it from, I may not think that, that there needs to be a, a lap lane in the pool for swimming, but other people would really like to have that. So I think it's, it's really, and we have to move the pool because, because of the bistro. So why wouldn't we want to accommodate what the majority of members want in a pool, such as more space for water aerobics? I'd like to swim laps, not me personally, other people have expressed that. So if we're building a new pool, why would we say tough, tough beans? You can't have a lap lane, because, you know, 75% of the people didn't want a lap lane. I just, I, I wish people would look at it from the perspective of, we're trying to meet what the, what will cover the majority of members and increase their satisfaction. You know, I don't play tennis, but, you know, I support having a, a viewing area for new renovation. I mean, it, that's, that's just, that's just how it's, how it's, how it is.
I now ask a question?
Sure.
Is 27% people voted against a new fitness facility? Is that the majority of the people? Yes or no? 27% said no, said they don't want it.
No, it's not a majority.
They wanted, 27% said yes.
That's not, that's not correct.
That's the number.
Over 50% of the people support expanding the fitness center.
I'm not addressing this, I'm a member of the committee, I'm not thinking about the community. I'm not thinking about me, I'm speaking for other people. Never just looking about me, other than other people.
Never just looking about me, other than other people.
I go there. A comment on the fitness center only. I go there off and on, maybe three, four times a week, winter and summer. I've never seen it overcrowded. But when I call up the golf course to use it at 10 after 8, Saturday morning, they tell me, sorry, Lorraine, booked at 10 after 8. I called Jeff and I wanted an appointment at 9 o'clock at the fitness center. He says, you're number 21, you have to make another time. Call back, come at 10 after 10, not 10 after 8. So he's not overcrowded, his scheduling is a problem. My only comment. Everything else is perfect.
Beautiful. One thing I want to say that bothers me more than anything else is people say that the board is not listening. And just because the board doesn't agree with you doesn't mean they're not listening to you. I appreciate every time that you come to the board and make your feelings known, and that's your way of participating. But this project has been going on for so long that you could have been on a committee and actually been in there. I object also to the center being, that's, it isn't just a fitness center, it's a community center. And we do need those rooms for extra meetings, and we need them for mahjong, because, and we need them for poker, and we need them for gymnastics, and we need them for the Thornbrook meeting, we have so many. Just take a breath, I do think that the board has planned for what is best for the community. What will save our values of our home, what will make people want to buy in here. I'm looking fine, and thank you very much for presenting us with something that I think is a value piece of project. I hope you get back to the point about the two votes versus one vote.
That's on the agenda, coming up once this conversation.
There's a good reason for it.
We'd like to get a word on the money first.
Right, yeah. We've gotten off the, the money.
And thank you also for saying that it's not to exceed 13, that's nice. Thank you.
Oh, right now we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the finance committee, unless Ben has something different.
I've got a few comments to queue here. Mary Pettit, want to thank the board for the work it has done to present a thoughtful plan to improve the value and quality, the value and quality of our Stonebridge community. Opinion that the plan is structured to give members solid value. For Stonebridge competitive with peer clubs, and also provide a better quality of living experience for all members. Look forward to seeing the artistic expression of the plans soon. Anybody else? We have. James McGuire. Then why did this committee decide that all components for discussion and vote be rolled into a yes/no vote?
We will address that shortly. Okay, so the motion for us, David, and you could make this motion as the chair, you want to recommend what the finance committee is recommending, you'd like to have that voted on by the board, the three components, $124 a month per member. Not to exceed 13 million and not to exceed 12 years. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what you're suggesting, right?
That's the motion, yes.
Second, please.
A second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Very good, all right. For two more items, the first is going to be an additional report, which, Dave, I think you're going to start with this conversation. This is going to lead to the, to the vote of one vote versus two votes, which was a motion made last week, last week, last month, I guess, last board meeting, by Max, who will make that shortly, and we'll let him describe it. But prior to that, one of the questions we had was whether or not, what the impact would be if we ended up with two different projects at two different times. And I'd like, Dave, to go through that for everyone to understand, and then we can move to Max's motion regarding the vote.
Right, yeah, as part of what the finance committee, in particular, the subcommittee of the finance committee has spent a lot of time going over is not just the three numbers that you voted on, but what are the, what are the financial impacts of a simultaneous project? And there is basically five different areas that I'm going to go over. And many of you, maybe in the room, can't see the screen, or some can't read it, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through them individually. The first being the reduced inflation risk. So if we were to delay the facility or the golf course to separate times, that would increase the cost of both projects significantly. That is in addition to doing two disruptions. Construction inflation has been averaging anywhere from 3.7% to 4.5%. And that's over a period of 2011 to 2022. Using those averages, delaying the golf course for one year would increase the cost over $200,000. And delaying the facilities would increase that cost 260,000, and that would compound each year. And when I'm talking about those numbers, I'm just talking about construction costs. So in addition to those costs that would be impacted, would be soft costs, would be things like furniture and fixtures, lighting, all the things that would, would go into the design, interior design. But we haven't, we don't have a good benchmark for that, so that's not something that we can quantify at this point. But we know intuitively, those costs are going to go up along with construction costs. So, the second benefit to doing a simultaneous project is we avoid two borrowings and increased interest rates. Number one, I don't know of many banks that are going to have covenants that allow us to have piggyback, piggyback a second loan on top of their primary loan. And typically, the bond covenants or the loan covenants would, would preclude that from happening. So, we would have to pay off the first loan before getting a second loan. An if, and this is a big if, if we were successful in obtaining a second loan, there is a high probability that interest rate on a second loan would be significantly higher. Because we're pretty sure that with what's going on with inflation, the Federal Reserve is going to be slowly but surely increasing that interest rate beyond 2023. But they'll likely be starting that process somewhere in 2023, or maybe even earlier. Hopefully not, as I said before. But we can't predict what they're going to do, and we don't have a crystal ball, neither do they. The third benefit is that we avoid multiple disruptions. And I'll use an example, as golf and lunch services are an integral part of, of each other in the summer months. So having both closed at the same time makes the most financial sense and is more member-friendly than disrupting two separate seasons. A fourth issue is the, that there is codependency of both projects. And we are creating valuable usable land. The expansion of the bistro, the pool, and the fitness facilities requires filling in the pond, creating valuable and usable land of about 5,000 square feet adjacent to the 18th green. As well, there would be an additional 5,000 square feet of usable land to make the needed humidity center a possibility. Now, we've talked about, and you've heard the word sustainability, and we can't stress this enough. The renovation of the golf course will significantly improve the sustainability, and as I said before, that equals a longer useful life, which in turn reduces the future capital reserve assessments, which merely offsets the cost of the new and renovated assets. If these projects are not done together as proposed, i.e. cutting out the wow factor, there is no way that we would justify a 12-year term loan, since the useful lives of the slimmed-down projects would be not remotely close to a 15- or 20-year proposed plan. And lastly, any delay in part or all of the project would likely mean reducing the scope due to expected significant cost increases, but not necessarily in, reducing the scope, but not necessarily reducing the cost. So these are all very logical and powerful reasons and benefits to do this simultaneously.
Thank you, Dave. Max?
Yes, Jim, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Max. Would you please state what you'd like to propose today regarding the one vote, two vote?
Well, let me preface that, first of all, saying, I want everyone to know, I am 100% behind both of these projects. I think it's, I think when we roll this out, that many of the people who are interested in the two votes would, when they see what we have proposed and we analyze all the benefits of this, I think many, if not most of those people will be excited about voting for both projects. Me personally, I am very, I would be very happy with the one vote. However, this is not, you know, this decision is not about me. And out of respect for the few, and more than the few people who have requested the two vote, I'd make a motion that we do allow the two vote. I'm not, I'm not concerned that this project's not going to pass. I think that of the people I've talked to, overwhelming majority seem to be in favor, I wouldn't seem to be supportive of it. But I do, I do understand, you know, that there will be some people who are not in favor of one side of this or the other. Someone made the comment to me, please don't let Stonebridge become frumpy. Well, I don't know if frumpy is even in the dictionary, but I know what frumpy is, and I don't want, I don't want Stonebridge to be frumpy either. And I think we need to have a community that's something we can be proud of in Naples, and something that would be attractive to new buyers. I feel very confident these projects are going to increase our property values, probably more than the expense that this $48 a month is going to impact us. So although I'm, I'm comfortable with one vote, I'm going to make the motion that we allow two votes, just out of respect for the few people that think that's in their best interest. That I highly discourage them from splitting their vote. I totally endorse both of, both sides of this project.
Second for them? Second for them? Anybody?
Second.
Second, okay. You have to be able to spell frumpy in order to.
Yeah, be sure and get that frumpy in a minute, if you would, that's.
We have an interloper who just got out of the car.
Been on the whole time.
Oh, boy.
All right, we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second, and I'm going to ask every board member to take some time and give us their comments, and I think we'll start inside here with Deputy Taylor. I think we already heard some.
Thank you. You know, seeing what Dave has just put up on the screen, I fear that if one project, if we have two votes, project is accepted and the other project is not, we would be bound to take on the project that was accepted. And then all of those things that Dave just outlined would come into play. None of them being considered physically responsible thing to do. I want to reiterate that we have listened, we have heard, we do discuss things through emails, et cetera. We have listened to what the concerns are, we have thought about it over and over. We have to decide as nine members, a project that we feel represents what the majority of our homeowners want. The majority, the majority. 200 members is not the majority. I feel that because we have been totally transparent, all of the communications have been out there, I feel like it would be fiscally irresponsible to do one project without the other. As this project was put together, because this is what our members said they wanted. And so for those reasons, I would not be in favor of two votes.
Can it be?
Well, I asked somebody why they wanted two votes, and what was their reasoning, and which vote did they not support? And what it turned out being is they didn't support either vote for a variety of reasons. And so I think it should stay one vote, for the reasons that Dave put through. And I think the committee has spent a lot of hours putting this plan together. And yes, okay, fine, it was going to be $100, but when it came down to it, to put everything in, it had to be $124,000 to get everything to make this. Other than homeowners. So I vote.
Dan, well?
Thank you. I listened to everything, every word of this discussion today. I have the greatest respect for the work that was put into this by the two subcommittees and by the finance committee. After listening to the finance committee comments that Dave made today, I thought they were very persuasive. I think that the work that the two subcommittees have done is exemplary. And are there's things that aren't going to make some, or make some people unhappy or less than happy, yes, they are. But change is always difficult, and you're never going to get 100%. I believe that the greatest chance of success for these projects is if we have one vote on both projects. Because they kind of work together to improve the environment here at Stonebridge to the benefit of our members, to the salability of our units in the future. I think that combined projects are the way to go for a variety of reasons, not just financial. And to separate the votes only allows somebody who's dissatisfied with the vote to know on that, and yes, on the facilities and vice versa. I think these are good projects, I'm 100% behind both of them, and I will not vote for splitting the vote. I want to stick with my.
Gail? You're muted, Gail.
Sorry, my dog was barking a little while ago, so I had to mute. I think it's not, not a matter of whether we respect other members and what their wishes are, because I think that over the past few months, we've listened and responded to all questions and concerns. Because we may not agree with you, doesn't mean we don't respect your right to voice your opinion. So, I'm also frustrated, on the other hand, I'm frustrated by the fact that multiple occasions talked about the financial risks of separating these projects, but it appears that some people either don't understand all of this, or they are not listening to what the board is trying to do in their best interest. So, for me. So for me, I believe it needs to be one vote. I believe that if it gets voted down, I, I believe that if we're not going to do one project, we shouldn't do either project. And we've reiterated, Dave's committee spent a lot of time telling us that as a board, we're fiscally irresponsible if we don't do these projects together. And so that, our duty is to, is, we have a fiscal responsibility to our members. So for that reason, I would support one vote.
Kathy D?
I actually have a lot of friends that signed those letters to separate the renovation project. And, you know, it's very difficult. Those friends range from being strongly opposed to both projects to others who support the project, but signed the letters because their friend asked them to. When I first heard about all the changes years ago that were being proposed, I also questioned the necessity of why we needed to update to that extent. But over time, and especially after visiting other clubs and talking with friends who renovated their clubs and following the work of our member ad hoc committees, I am more convinced than ever that this is the right time for this project and to move forward with this project. A lot of members from a cross-section of Stone Bridge have put in a tremendous amount of time and research and effort looking into what is best for Stone Bridge 2023 and on. And as a board member, I feel I have the responsibility to do what is right for the current and future members of Stone Bridge. And as a result, based on everything I have heard and seen, I am for one vote on this project. Our ad hoc committees, the strategic planning committee, the golf committee, the finance committee, and the board have all done their due diligence, and they support these two projects together. So I am clearly one vote on this.
Tom Pinkerton?
You know, I see these as one project. I think they're codependent on each other. This certainly gives us the best possibility to get the most done for the cost. If they're delayed or separated, the costs will escalate. The thought of having two separate service interruptions, just, it's just a very hard thing to picture, to close down the club for six months for the golf course and then two years later, close it down for six months for the facilities. I just don't think that's the appropriate thing for us to do. For the additional $48 a month from what we are currently paying, I think we're getting a huge bang for our buck. And for all those reasons, I support one vote up or down for the project.
Sure, they, it's kind of disappointing to me that there are those who choose to ignore or dismiss the logical reasons and benefits that I just went over for what we're trying to accomplish for the benefit of, of the membership. This is what we're trying to do for you, and I'm going to summarize them again. Reducing the inflation risk, avoiding impacts of two borrowings, avoiding the likely higher interest rates beyond the spring of 2023, avoiding multiple disruptions. Both projects are codependent, and that, that we create valuable usable land. And I would say we're doing creation of land on the golf course as well, not just around the facilities. Increasing sustainability. And let's not forget or underestimate the increased marketability of our properties after this is completed. So given the two-vote scenario, if one or both of the components of this plan were to be voted down, all of these financial benefits would dissolve. And planning for both components would start all over again, resulting in delays and the reduced scope, the higher costs, multiple borrowings, everything I just talked about that we're trying to avoid on behalf of Stone Bridge. So I can't, in good conscience, and for, or I have no sound reasons to break from the board's initial recommendation to have one vote. For, for all of the logical reasons and benefits mentioned, I strongly support both projects to be done simultaneously, which they then leads me to the logical conclusion that only one vote is necessary.
Well, let me give you, my remark's going to be a little bit longer, but if you bear with me, I want to go a little historically back a little bit. In 2016, when the Strategic Plan Committee was talking and asked and surveying and trying to find out, the words that came back from that particular planning effort, they said that they wanted to protect, they, meaning us, the members, wanted to protect and preserve what has been achieved and remain up to date with current trends. They also said they wanted to identify innovative solutions to space limitations, translate that into 10,000 square feet more in the bistro and workout area. They wanted to provide members with more casual gathering opportunities. They wanted to ensure that our community remains relevant in our marketplace and vibrant and attractive to newcomers. But when we got that in October of 2016, the leadership of this, the board at the time moved forward, and every board thereafter, looking to the future, keeping in mind what the members said they were worried about and wanted to address. They didn't stop there. We went and we researched what other organizations were doing, what we're doing. We wanted to make sure who our competitors were, why people were going there. We talked to professionals who knew how to do this renovations. And we said, before we screw this up, what did you learn from that particular rehab? What did you learn from this particular operation? How did you expand? What to avoid? And then we continued to survey from 2016 all the way to 2020. Almost every year, we asked different questions by professionally, professional organizations who were trained like this, not just, you know, a couple of us sitting around, so what do you think? We hired the golf architect, who was a tremendously famous guy in southwest Pennsylvania or southwest Florida. Golf are good in Pittsburgh. He's a great hockey player, too. Anyway, he's very well-known, and he knows what he's talking about. And, you know, I don't know one grass from another grass, never mind how to move things around. I hired him, and he's been very helpful. And when he made his first presentation in 2019, everyone wanted to do it right now. We hired the members representative, which I asked Gail to explain what his job is, to keep us, again, out of trouble. These are professional people who know what they're doing. It would be stupid for the board and for the committees to say, yeah, we got to do this. We don't know how to do this. And then finally, in 2020, Cornerstone folks, very well-respected organization, they said, after the survey of the membership, they said that what the members talked about was modifying the grill room bar. We're going to do nano doors. We're not going to have to rehab everything then. They said that they wanted to, the members indicated the highest support for increasing the bistro capacity and expanding the kitchen. You can't just bring tables and chairs out. You need to expand the kitchen. Expanding the capacity for additional fitness equipment receives support from half of the members. Support for a golf course renovation similar to the initial architect in 2019 got a 3.6 out of 5 rating support. So I say all that history there because we were presented with a product that has two components that addressed all of these questions and desires that the members wanted. That's why we initially recommended one vote, and that's why we're proposing it today. Now, having said my piece, this is a motion, so we're going to open it up for the membership here in the room, membership online, to address the issue as to why two votes on these two components is appropriate.
Ben, the gross misinterpretation. Anything that the naysayers, if that's the way you want to label, I don't like it because we're all one. I don't think we should refer to each other in negative terms because you've taken the positions, I understand that. We voted to be unified, not to be separate. But this is a misinterpretation, and I think it has to be addressed because it's never been addressed. From the very first letter that was ever written, whether it was authored by Ed Vasallo or what is referred to now as the team of whatever nail label you want to give, let's just say the team of members who make things a little bit differently. No one, no one, no one, no one. Even when we were back with Sandy Katz and doing the finances for the expansion of the clubhouse, in banking, you cannot take a loan and then come back and take a second loan. Nobody's going to give it to you. The banks are in business to make money. So that's a misinterpretation. And it was never, when they're asking for two votes, I want to clarify that because I think it's causing us to misunderstand each other. No one was ever, ever, ever stating, let's do it in two parts. What they were simply asking for, including myself, was the right to vote on each project separately. As soon as that vote would be taken, regardless of whatever the results would be, the project logically, you cannot have one thing closed and the other thing open because it's going to cost us more money. Once you split it, you're going to come into two different interest rates, but you're not going to get it because they will close down your loan. They will not allow you to come. No bank is going to allow that. And I think we're talking about something that no one, Dave Harper has tremendous, and the people that are on his finance committee have huge backgrounds. They know you can't get this, and it's Chris. To think that anybody of appropriate thinking power intended for the words to be misinterpreted. It was missed when the, when we tried to address that, that this was a misinterpretation. It was never, ever intended to do these projects differently. The only way you can do them is together. And so nobody was saying, don't do that. It was just saying, please, let's vote on the two things separately so that since they've asked amounts of money, whether one is seven and one is six, whatever, it's a lot of money. And that money, we want it, like you do, to be for the things that you decide. If something is, and you just finished reading many of the things. I just finished reading those all over again, so I would be sure what I knew, what I was talking about. And things like correcting in the grill room bar area to make it more social was very, very highly rated on the list. That's something that I attempted to address, but not directly. Instead, I think what you're trying to guide us towards is an enlarged bistro. Gail can correct me, but I think the capacity that I have read of the seating for the enlarged bistro is 384-person capacity. There may, it's not 4? Pardon me? Oh, I said three, 284, sorry. 284 or 285, whatever, but I think it's 284 capacity of persons that could utilize it at one time. And what we're suggesting was that this bistro does need to be expanded, Andy just said that, but it doesn't have to be expanded to that degree. Sometimes it compromises what we need.
Karen, can we go back to your point?
And that's all I'm trying to say, is that...
One vote or two votes? Forward or against?
Two votes, and the reason two votes is not for the reasons that were listed on Dave's thing I read at the semi meeting where Ward got up and, well, he didn't get up because it wasn't that kind of meeting, it was virtual. But my, my vote is for two votes, and I want the understanding that it is not for these two things to be separated because that's erroneous. Sorry, I was so...
Ben had some online comment?
Yeah, there's a couple of comments online. Follow-up from Dave and the Wire says, as it is a no vote means for all of the new committees, it broke into separate votes, a new look can be given at this knee versus cost. Not after thorough review, owners may want an expansion of the bistro, but not knocking down a perfectly good fitness center. Or the likely golf country club needs to have maintenance every 10, 12 years and would likely be approved.
What else up there?
There's a follow-up from Mr. Wire. He says, Mr. Elwell, and I'll preface this by saying, the only reason my name is on the webinar is because it comes from my laptop. I'm not taking any ownership in that. Mr. Elwell and the committee make a case based upon one project as sound. Members that may be opposed to some of the projects should have been rolled into one at all.
Gentlemen?
Yes.
That's it. Any other comments regarding the one vote, two vote from the audience here? We'll give you a chance to close it out. We'll call the vote. Max, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Any last comments before we call the vote?
I have no more comments.
In favor of one vote, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a second. Oh, so for two votes, all right. Well, we'll do it the proper way then. Boy, that's what I...
Why are you happy here? Time to get in the big box.
Will be in my parking space. All right, the motion is to have two votes. All those in favor say aye.
In favor of two votes, I'm in favor of two votes.
All those in favor of one vote, or all those opposed to two votes? No, no.
Nay.
No.
Opposed.
Gail, come on.
Opposed.
Right. Very good. That is final comments from online or from the audience today. Thank you very much. We, we do appreciate, we do, just to say finally, we do listen, we measure what we hear, and sometimes we just don't agree, but we certainly do not. And the bar is not open today? We're adjourned.